Great phones. All right, folks, we're gonna call this meeting to order at five o'clock P M and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't let's look here.
We've got to be there.
No while since you've been here.
No, I'm just kidding.
All right, we're gonna, we have a public hearing to start with, well, yeah, we'll call it order five because you're still five o'clock out. Uh, this is the hearing on the special town meeting on November fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a very basic presentation and really my thoughts and points.
Ah, six hundred and fifty thousand.
So, uh, as Chair, I'm going to do this is the public hearing, the second public hearing, the statutory public hearing for the special town meeting that the board has called for November fourth. Um, today's October twentieth. Uh, the subject of the article that's on the warrant is located at fifty Pleasant Street, map thirty-six, lot twenty-seven. So we are right here, this is twenty-five, it's the town office, here's fire station, ball field out back. The town owns twenty-six, this is preschool three, uh, and this is twenty-seven here, this is the property we're gonna talk about this evening. That's what it looks like from the road, this is from the property tax card, just kind of shows the layout there, there's a barn, shed, a middle house, the front house there. Background, so the current owner reached out a month and a half, maybe two months ago to me, uh, and said, we're interested in selling this property, use the town interest. So the board met in executive session, discussed that proposition as they're allowed to do. Um, and the, the family emphasized to me that they would like the town to own this property. Uh, there is a purchase and sale agreement in place, that was the outcome. Very good session, the board voted to have me sign a purchase and sale agreement. Um, there is a due diligence period in that, the, uh, purchase and sale agreement. Uh, and that runs until November thirtieth, so the town meeting is on fourth, that's when the town will give the board, uh, or give or not give the board authority to purchase it, and the board, based on the outcome of that, if it passes, they, uh, will begin their due diligence period or continue it. Uh, and be the title search. The agreement is contingent, selective contingent, uh, meaning that if it passes the board and has the offer section to purchase the property, they're not required to, but they will be empowered to. Uh, background, so in the first public hearing, I, somebody asked what the value was, and off the cuff, I said it was eighty-five, just to be very clear on this. Eighty-nine thousand four hundred. Um, approximately eleven hundred dollars per year is what is paid in property taxes there for the last two or three years. It was a thousand before that, and then it was around eight or nine hundred, so that will come up over a little side six. Yes.
If you could just hold your questions till he's done with the presentation or raise your hand, I'll call it, please.
Um, so there are some environmental considerations, so before this building can be, uh, demolished, um, there would have to be asbestos survey, that has not been ordered yet, uh, cost fifteen hundred dollars. Again, this is one of those things that I think it would be prudent to wait to find out if the town is interested in buying before we spend any. Uh, there were some suspect materials on the walkthrough, uh, some wallboard and, and some of the rooms and, uh, some flooring, uh, some flooring items like linoleum type material. Um, asbestos has got to be done by folks who are qualified to do it, and it's got to be tracked, basically craning the brain. Uh, it's pretty, pretty intense, so that's asked to be done by others before we can do anything else there. Uh, environmental considerations continue, um, so there's a little history you may have heard around town, a couple of years ago. Uh, some of the public work folks for our work in the street smelled fuel oil, reported it, fire department responded, tracked it down to, uh, the basement of, of this house, uh, which the owner is aware of, I contacted him very late. Um, D E P report, which is public, uh, it's actually the board's materials, they reported no recoverable materials or impacts on the environment. Now, uh, and again, that has something to do with the fact that it's not on town water or, uh, that it is on town water and town sewer, more on that later. Uh, fuel oil was observed by me, uh, when I did the walkthrough with the asbestos company. When he opened the basement door, he could smell fuel oil, so a few years later, I, I wasn't expecting that, to be honest with you, but I did, uh, I did encounter it, so I, I have a duty to disclose that to you. Um, so now we get to environmental assessment, uh, kind of proper, if you will. Um, and we have a guest here tonight, Scott Dixon from Mainland Development, uh, is here to, to help me explain this or explain this for me, uh, there's a, uh, process, uh, that's broken into phases, that's called environmental assessment. This was brought up by a resident in the first public hearing, so, uh, I think it would be helpful, Scott, if you don't mind. Walking us through what that, what that looks like.
Sure, yeah, yeah, so, uh, my name's Scott Dixon, I'm with the Mainland Development Consultants, we're down in the Hookmore Falls. I'm an engineer and a geologist and a site evaluator. Um, I've done ESAs since I was in my twenties, so that's a long time ago. What, um, what, uh, uh, the, the D E P report talked about no recoverable materials, that was by the spill response folks. Um, there's still maybe, um, material in the ground, in the basement, and the long and short of it is, is that, uh, that material that's there, it could, um, affect, um, how that site is used in terms of, you know, if you're gonna build a new building over it or parking lot or, um, anything where the public might be using it, or even a, a new private citizen who's buying it. Um, there might be something down there that affects, you know, health and the environment. So, uh, sort of the, the first step in assessing that is doing what's called a phase one, and that's really just kind of a paper step. You know, what can we find from records of, you know, existing records, D E P records, town records, interviewing people? I've interviewed Joe before for years, he's in town and the fire chief and, uh, probably, probably worse, I think I've talked to Keith or an ESA. So, so we would do, uh, an, an ESA, heck, maybe there's something else there, who knows? That, and that's what you, you know, you try to find out, it's a non-invasive type work study. And then, at the end of that ESA, the recommendation might be, hey, we should go, go in and, um, do some digging, party by hand and figure out what the levels are, what was the type contamination, how rich is it, and can we figure out, you know, what it's, the shape of its boom is, you know? And, and I'm making an assumption, I'm making an assumption that there was a spill from the well. That's, you know, but, but, you know, if it was out in the street, you know, in the, uh, uh, the drain pipe from the basement, there's probably some sort of release. So, the phase two is, is basically trying to quantify how much, um, is there? And, and then, uh, also quantify how, how rich is it, you know, how, how high is the contamination, and then, when you, when you have that, those, those, that sort of information, it starts telling you, well, um, this is what you have and what might, uh, somebody might want to do in the future with this site. Private ownership, town ownership, parking lot, building, and you start looking at, well, what are the cleanup, what are the cleanup goals? And again, I'm assuming that there's something there to be cleaned up, maybe there isn't, you don't know until you actually go in and do the phase two where you're digging and taking some samples. And, and ultimately, um, uh, ultimately, the way to put a, a, a bow on it in terms of liability for, again, either the town or a future owner or private owner is to take these studies, go to the D E P and say, hey, D E P, um, here's what's there, here's what somebody wants to do with it, this is what we propose to do to make the site safe and, and a no longer reliability, basically. Um, and the D E P says, okay, yeah, go ahead and do this, you know, do this cleanup, let's, let's assume there's a cleanup if we have to. And you document the cleanup, and at the end of that, uh, you get what, what Joe wrote up there, you get a, a certification of completion. And it, but the whole goal, goal is to end up with a site that it may not be immaculately clean, because sometimes you can't clean up everything, but it meets the, the, the level of which you proposed to use it for, and the D E P says, yes, you can use it for that, given what you've got there.
Questions? Chris?
So, um, I'm feeling familiar with this stuff too, from several projects over the years. And, uh, I've worked with your firm quite a bit, Bob and I were in college together, both lived in Hancock Hall back in, oh, today, I know he's retired now, but and worked with Emily and a lot of people from your group, and I think we've talked on the phone for a while. So, um, my concern is, let's say, okay, let's decide we want to buy this. I've, I've done this before, and I guess that's the question I'd like to know is, if Scott agrees with that, is I don't think we need to do a phase one, because we already have a D E P thing on file, you can go and do the search. I'd go right to a phase two, have some boring stem in that basement to determine the, the level of saturation. If it's a heavy saturation, say for instance, the tank lifted up, from what I understood, and floated, so it had to be hundred and twenty-five gallons or less probably, or hundred, ha, at least less than half a tank in order for it to flip up and float, at least in my experience, that's what's done with propane tanks, done with a number of different things, when you get super saturated, we had a tank actually bubble up out of the ground, it saddlebagged propane one because it wasn't tethered, so. But, if that's the case, the hundred and twenty-five gallons, if you calculate that with a heavy saturation, you're looking at about twenty-five hundred square feet, which is about, uh, ninety-two cubic yards, so at three seventy-five, that's thirty-five thousand dollars per cubic yard, not including the cost of excavation, those pieces, plus you gotta do the, yeah, there you go. So, you're gonna spend a chunk, so I'm all for, first of all, I'm all for applying this property for this, I think it's a logical thing to pick up. It's a dilapidated house, it needs to be demoed, but I think we need to talk about with the pricing and the impact of that. Once you have the phase two study, under main law, you disclose that to the seller, any subsequent buyer of that property is gonna be aware. Now, um, it's unfortunate that it happened, but a V wrap is essential to that, because that limits your liability outside of the property. And, so to me, I would think we could go back and say, and maybe you guys don't feel like you, you get approval to spend up to ninety-five thousand to purchase the property, say, look, we'll do the ninety-five, but we want to put thirty or forty thousand or fifty-six, whatever you estimate, unless the, the demo cost we already knew were gonna happen, we offered ninety-five, we'll put the environmental costs, put it into an escrow and say, we'll close on the sale, we'll buy the property, we're gonna put this money in escrow, and then we can use part of that proceeds, we can decide you negotiate, say, okay, we'll split the cost of the environmental, or we'll, you guys need to cover it, and then, once we get that all done, we get the V wrap in hand, certified, we'll release the remaining proceeds from escrow to you as, uh, the net payment out of that. That protects us as a town, that takes a ninety-five thousand dollars issue and doesn't let it turn into a two hundred thousand dollar one, because that's a lot for a vacant lot. I mean, the average vacant lots in town that have sold in the past year or two, I've been involved in a couple of those transactions, run somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars per clean lot that does not have a building on. So if you said, it's got a building on, you're gonna demo it, then it's probably worth sixty thousand, I think is obviously we're the logical buyer, because it's a lot, it's, we're the closest to it, uh, for the town, that I'm okay with doing the ninety-five, but let's set thirty thousand aside at the proceeds and say, okay, let's figure this out, maybe we can get the phase two, I mean, what I would, I would do if, if it was me, and I was looking at this from a banking standpoint, or a lawyer's standpoint on my side, I'd say, let's hire Scott and his crew to go in and do some test borings and go right in that basement and, and go down, whether those are hand shoved or not, determine is the saturation two feet down, is it four feet down, is it six feet down, is it eight? Look at the circumference of the area, figure that out and say, okay, is it the thirty thousand dollar problem? And usually these all, because you've got to haul all this off to Norwich Walk, I think is the closest force here. Maybe somewhere else, Spruce Ridge, yeah, Bangor, uh. The other thing is, is, uh, the asbestos removal, that's a place where you may be able to save, if you're allowed to, you get permission from them to take a piece of the shingle off and send it out to test. We're familiar with that, because we did with the Sergeant Family, we already found when we did one of the houses up on the Quasic, there was a shingle, we took a piece, Smokey took a piece of the shingle, sent it out, found out that that type of shingle could be wet down with masks on, team could do it, break it up into the four by four squares, wrap it in plastic, and it could be and then duct tape it, and then you can throw the plastic encapsulated into the, the town dump. There is a, there is a level of that, so my suggestion would be is get that quantified. If it's the other asbestos and the other piece is gonna do, that's that part. If you're gonna be using it for commercial use, there's a whole division at D E P that sends an inspector out, I've, I've dealt with them before, where they come up and they'll inspect, they'll walk through the entire house for two hundred dollars or maybe three hundred probably now, but it was two hundred dollars when we did the, we had somebody go through and walk through with, when, next to Sarge's, when we tore down the, uh, Mary Anne's Beauty Salon there. Cost two hundred bucks, the guy came through, said this and this and this, and we determined what we could get rid of and, and what was not, and they take a sample of the flooring tile, the guy can test it all, he's a super nice guy, probably has number, glad to get it to Joe, and you can figure those pieces out. But I think a key thing to this is you guys have got to decide, is you say, okay, do we want to buy something that we're gonna then have two hundred thousand dollars in, or do we want to kind of go back to these folks and say, look, this is, this is a significant environmental issue, we're very interested in buying it, but we need to mitigate some of our costs. So I implore you to kind of think about that, uh, you've got an inspection period that's through to the thirtieth, so you can go get approved to buy it, but I would think that would help your narrative of getting approval if you were able to go back and say, we've also negotiated with the, the seller that if there is any of these extra environmental costs, that they're gonna help us either share in the cost, or we're able to put some of those proceeds aside, because this isn't an estate sale, um, that's being sold from the family members there, I will tell you in my experience, once you do an estate sale and the check's written, if it's not all distributed in seven days, most often leave out to everybody, and then you don't really have a, a clear point of recovery. So, down the road, so I think escrow is a good solution to protect against that. You may be able to go in, they do the initial test borings and everything, and figure out, say, oh, hey, it's minimum impact, it's only gonna be this amount, and then we agree on it, we go, but the worst case scenario, as you can see, is it could change, and I, I, I just, I'm not trying to be mean or anything for the folks that are trying to sell it, but I think we as a town accepting any kind of environmental, I've, we've all seen, you know, all the challenges that happened in the Quasic twenty, twenty-five years ago, those pieces, and there's a bunch of V wraps there, where it says, if you dig down, you get a V wrap sometimes, you get it where it says, okay, as long as you don't dig below this level, you're fine, because you're not disturbing the certain saturations below, but we don't know, does that go down two feet, does it go down ten feet, I mean, I don't think number two oil is gonna spread a hundred and twenty-five gallons fifty feet down, I think it's only gonna go a few feet, but I think you need to get that quantified before you pull the trigger.
Scott, can we talk a little bit about, um, quantifying what might be in the basement, how practical would it be to do that with the house standing? Or does the house need to be demoed before you can practically figure that out?
I mean, I, in, in my opinion, it's worth going down and doing as much as we can by hand. Um, obviously, if, if it's more than, you know, four, five, six feet deep, we can't really explore that by hand, and at that point, you're talking, well, doing some actual, you know, test pitting with an excavator, once the house is demoed, which I know kind of puts, you know, is a little bit of a, a chicken in the egg, you know, to demo the house, you couldn't have to own it, but I, I would, I would say, let's see what we can find, and, and you still can't really quantify, because I, it's, it seems like something has been going out to the ditch in the, in the drain line, so it's possible that the pipe is separated, and there's some stuff up in the actual trench from the house to the ditch too, so you know, we could go down and, and
That you'll need to turn off every
He's cutting the drive, maybe it's cutting the drive, but I'll tell you what, uh, oil and soils are the ever kind of
Chris, that's what I'll look to Scott, Scott, what about if we got permission from the seller, since the house is not online, here, there, cut some dig stake and just dug along the foundation, right near the side where the oil tank was originally sitting, to see if it permeated into the soil, because I understand it's a dirt basement, and you might get a lot digger, deeper with using the town's equipment with an excavator, and you could dig down alongside the footer and see if it permeated out that far, or in a couple of the spots where that exterior drain goes, because it's either went out the drain pipe or it seeped out under next, next to the foundation, right? That might be a cheaper way to get at least an idea of the level of saturation.
You might couple that with, uh, something inside by hand.
Yeah, exactly.
Luke?
Um, I'm curious to know how you came up with the ninety-nine five. And, and are you deducting from that price the tear down cost that, you know, to the town and I mean, you're not just handing over ninety-nine five for that whole, that property, are you?
And the purchase and sale agreement, that is the, the purchase price.
That's what I, that's
That's the purchase price.
Stood from the, our pool in the Highlander.
And, and the purpose of this slide is to illustrate at this point in time, these, all of these prices, or these costs, I should say, are above that, the ninety-nine five. Um, so as it stands right now, you're looking between fifteen, sixty thousand dollars above the purchase price. I think that was just the farmer's point, was the board might want to think about.
I mean, the house is basically a tear down, so I, I'm a little concerned about the amount of our taxpayer money that it, it just doesn't compute in my brain, but, um, I just think that's an awful lot of money to pay for a property that, that we have to pay to demolish and, and discard.
Thank you, Luke. John, did you have something?
I had one question, the town workers that smelled the heating oil and then back to Chris, the tank floated, so I'm assuming this is the spring of the year. Dirt floor basement with basement drain.
I, it would have been actually September for line cleaning.
Yeah, it was the fall. All year, yeah. It was flipped over, it wasn't like the spring of the year.
Did you see it?
I didn't see it, I was told.
It was in September, Mr. Chair, the, the D E P docs manual stated September twenty-three.
So to say, if it floated and tipped with water running to the basement, then unfortunately, most of it went to the ditch and ended up in the lake.
I was kind of thinking
And then the odor stays, I mean, for as long as it stays.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, my anecdotal research on the site was that Davis had several problems with some flooding, and part of it was the runoff from the fields in this part here that ran into that basement to float it, so it could have li- literally lifted up in the spring of the year, flipped and been sitting on its edge there, so we don't know if it was a fast drip out or a long drip or whatever, and I'm not sure if any, I didn't see in the D E P file if there were any photos taken of the position of the tank or any of that stuff to quantify it, but it is true, oil flows. But, loads on top, but the question is, did it float on top the whole time, or did it float on top in April? And then, as things dried out over the summer, did it saturate into the ground?
Chair, have some more slides.
Sure.
You ready?
Yep, go right ahead.
So we'll, we'll graduate from environmental, uh, conditions to zoning, these were questions from the first thing, it is in the village zone. Here are the setbacks, it's twenty feet, uh, side rear, road setbacks, twenty-five, obviously demo permit will be required. Building permit required to rebuild if that, again, we haven't gotten that far yet, but if that were the trothers of the town, uh, conditional use, look at the land use table seven, there's a requirement, it is on town sewer and water, so previously possible uses, these were discussed in the first public hearing. Um, there isn't, uh, an official needs assessment happening now, it's in the very preliminary stages, so we don't have the outcome of that. Um, folks in the, in the hearing, the first hearing said, you know, if nothing else, that lot is valuable to the town or the buffer, several folks said that. Uh, parking lot is a, is a, uh, possibly used new town office that discussed, that had discussed and park park. Um, so park a park, just like Kelly Park, a small park, not, not a big one.
With an eternal fight. From the oil, from the oil, yeah, burn it off, make an eternal fight.
So, here's the article, uh, that will be recorded on the fourth, uh, shall the town prove the purchase of fossil land designated in map thirty-six, lot twenty-seven, with the improvements, uh, at fifty Pleasant Street for the price of ninety-nine five, the appropriation of one-time payment from the unassigned fund balance, so that part two of this question. Uh, and then the third part of it is authorizing the board to, uh, execute the purchase, should they feel that it's, uh, warranted to follow through with, so unassigned fund balance currently is five point two million. For something, we'll have the authority to talk about that, the meeting again is fourth in this room. And I say it's a meeting, it's an all-day voting event, um, it's a polling event, it opens at eight and closes at eight, and if you want to witness the swearing in of the moderator, you can do that at seven forty-five in the morning. So the takeaway, Mr. Chair, just to kind of back up, I, I just, we've covered it very nicely tonight, there are costs to this project above the, uh, ninety-nine five that is in the warrant article.
Um, Joe, uh, it, it is our intent to have Public Works use our equipment, use the town's equipment to, uh, demolish this building, should we purchase it, is that correct?
That's what, yeah, that's what my estimates are built on, um, I haven't had a chance because the board has been on vacation today, I haven't had a chance to talk to him about this, but I certainly know it's scope to do it, uh, it's the skill set.
Good, Chris?
Do you have to get a determination from legal, because it says there the price of ninety-nine five, if you pay less, is that allowed?
It is allowed, Chair, and I do have that determination.
Oh, great, yeah, because I was wondering.
Marie?
Um, shouldn't the audit include plus costs for asbestos and oil removal? Or contaminated soil removal, not just the ninety-nine five?
So the, it's a very good question, and the takeaway, as I, as I pointed to, is that this is the first part of it, purchasing land. Now, when this was written, um, there was a, a timeline for November fourth, we'd have all this information yet, um, to include in the article. So there would be a second article required, probably in June to, to do the next steps.
Hmm. So.
It's obviously now that we have numbers, it definitely, my, my mind frame changes on this property completely. But in that mechanism there, if, if the town peoples decide to say yes to this property at ninety-nine five, and else and turn around and then our next meeting say, we're not paying an additional sixty thousand, up to six thousand dollars to do any work, then what happens with the property? At that point, like, what do we, what's our next? What's our next cog at that point?
It's a very good question.
A good abandoned building attractive nuisance.
Yeah. Um, it's a good question, because if you, if the town were to think about selling, you could, all of the districts that you're facing now, you know, if that were something you wanted to get away from it, but selling, you have to cross all these, all these bridges that you're talking about now.
Definitely you're at a loss then, I mean, more than likely at a loss. To get rid of it with the known estimate, it's, it's just thinking.
No, but I mean, it depends on what, what you consider a loss, I mean, if you're looking at it entirely monetarily versus what what that plus the existing open lot could be, is it, is the cost, is it beneficial enough for, for the town of Ransley, for the use of Ransley, whatever that use may be, don't forget that, um, the property that is currently cleared on the corner was gifted to the town of Ransley, I believe. Um, I, I imagine we paid to tear it down, I believe, but our, our people tore it down, if I remember correctly. So, it, not that these are one and the same, but we had one piece of our property gifted to us that isn't, doesn't have a lot of room that we could use it for, and if we have the adjacent property that costs a little bit more money, it's not a break even, even, but put that in your mind, you get a free piece of property that's unusable, unusable, now you have one to purchase on this side to go in conjunction with that. Good point. Chris?
Uh, to counter that argument a little bit, is right now you got a free piece of property that you have no other cost with, so my only concern is is that if you don't have it clear, or you have some kind of an escrow balance to deal with that issue, that essentially you're buying what's called an attractive nuisance, you've got a abandoned building, if you don't have approval, or you can do it out of your normal ordinary operating budget to demolish it, then some kid could go in there that's up here in the summer or something, gets hurt, that's a liability, opens up to the town, and I don't know if the main toward act would prevent you from that, because you haven't, unless you find a way to fully secure it, which means you'd have to board up every window, every door, all that stuff to do that, so I mean, there's some costs with that. I was surprised at closing costs for thirty-five hundred bucks, since you're buying it and the transfer taxes is not that much money.
It's a high estimate.
Yeah, okay, and, and don't forget too, please make sure, because they are an out-of-state seller, that you reserve two and a half percent of the purchase price unless they provide you an R, an R E W exemption, because otherwise, we're responsible legally for the capital gains that could be there, even though it is an estate sale, it may have gone up in value since when Davis passed.
I bet, that's, that's the hundred thousand dollar mark is what, what triggers that, so we're, we're under that with the purchase price.
Okay.
That was discussed during the negotiations.
Should we buy this property? Um. Our attorney is going to ha- handle, an attorney, our attorney, somebody's attorney is going to handle these closings that's going to help cross these Ts, dot these Is, correct? Because I realize that you, your background have different knowledge than a lot of the people sitting on this board, but that's what we rely on our counsel for. Go ahead, Keith.
All right, so one, one question, and then I want to read something in the record from from Ethna, who's not here tonight, but she asked me if I would share this uh. This piece and that, ask some question. Uh, my own question is just to go back to. The oil incident. Um, I read what I, what I do. I knew some history of it, but just to be clear or open. Was the oil pres- oil, the smell and or oil observation? Was that seen in the sewer system or the, at that point, it could be a sewer system. Which is different than a, there's no catch basin on the hill, so it's going to be seen in the sewer system, or is that seen in the four-way? In the catch basin?
Uh, the report says storm wash.
So therefore it would come out of the perimeter drain of the property into the ditch, down through the intersection into the catch basin.
That's my understanding.
Down to the lake, as you said. I just want to make sure it wasn't in the sewer, because then that would be a different containment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Uh, all right, so the second piece, this is from Ethna, um, and I'll do my best at reading it and then hopefully I can ask the questions and answer it how they need to be. Um. And I haven't read over this yet, so. It states that at the initial hearing regarding the potential purchase of the abutting parcel. Uh, I, as an Ethna, asked whether there were a specific plan for its use. Response at the time was something like, not, not at this time, there isn't a. Isn't a proposed plan. And then it goes into say, however, at the subsequent meeting. The A board member expressed concern over flooring costs in the current building, concerns that. Appeared to be tied to potential plans if the parcel purchase was approved. That comment suggests that there may already be ideas or intentions for forming. Uh, or intentions forming about how this land would be used. When public funds are involved, especially nearly a hundred thousand dollars. Clarity and transparency are essential. The lack of clear information surrounding its potential purchase raises understandable concerns among residents. It's difficult to justify these kinds of spending without a defined purpose. I've heard it suggested by a community member that this parcel might simply serve as a buffer, but realistically, a ninety five, ninety nine thousand five hundred dollar buffer with no. Clearly articulated purpose seems like an impractical and costly use of taxpayer money. For many residents, that's a significant amount. And the reasoning behind the purchase should reflect that. There's also been mention of a needs assessment being conducted from the outside. It seems the needs assessment and the intended use of the property may be closely linked, possibly even interchangeable. If that's the case, and the purchase is being considered in connection with something like a future expansion of public services or facilities, I believe it's important to be transparent about that now. With all that said, I do have a few specific questions, and I think they uh I think are important for the public to understand. So the first, first question of the four and the first four bullet points is, is the purchase related to a specific expansion such as public safety? And that can be answered now or just whatever.
Not at this time. It's not, it's not related to anything. It's an abutting property, in my opinion.
Yep.
An abutting property that boards over the years. Uh, many different boards that I've been associated with in my seven years have always hoped that this property would come up for sale.
Perfect. Who is conducting the needs assessment?
Right here.
Right, right here. Will there be a, will there be meaningful community input before decisions are made about how the land is used?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And if so, well, uh, what will the public process look like?
I mean, you would have a series of public hearings, workshops. You know, the needs assessment, the the component, just to back up a little bit, the component that's underway of the needs assessment has been internal, as I've alluded to publicly. The next step comes to your table, where you'll talk about what what's been plugged in so far, and then, of course, anything you do here is public, but. I would encourage you to have a a public inter- interaction.
Oh, yeah.
Our needs assessment, some of what your constituents think, other needs are.
And then this last one says, one and final important question I believe the public deserves a clear answer to. If the town votes no on the purchase article, will the acquisition of the property be dropped? And will the, and the will of the voters be honored? Or is there a possibility the town would pursue the land through another mechanism?
I don't know of another mechanism to purchase a plot of property for that price um. Without town, town meeting vote, so my answer is nope.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I think what she's trying to clarify is is, there's a couple laws on the coast of the state of Maine that says. If an issue gets risen, gets voted on, gets voted down, it can't be revisited again. So I think that's what she's looking for clarification to say. You guys are saying, if this article gets voted down. We're not gonna rework it a little bit and then throw it back out again in three or four months.
The only way I could see it get it coming back is if this seller, this is me speaking, from what I think, if the seller. Wasn't able to sell the property after. After our article being voted down and they came back and offered it at a lower price that the townspeople may agree to.
Right, at the end of the day, it could be a town vote.
Right, yeah, no matter what the prices.
Because I did a F O A, F O I, Freedom Information Act on this, and Joe and the team were great. They gave me everything right away. I looked at the. Agreement, I looked at the D E P stuff, but I didn't see a seller's disclosure. Which normally that's a seven-page form, the standardized ones that almost all real estate transactions provide. A seller's disclosure. I'm guessing because it's an estate sale, they would probably all say none, no, none, none are unknown.
Mm-hmm.
But just so you know, as soon as we go into due diligence, we do a phase two, we develop a report, we give it to the seller. They're required under main state law to share that with any others, because it's a clear defect on the property. Just like if we did a title search and something came back says, there's a title issue, they would have to disclose that to any subsequent buyers. So I invite you to look at the fact with what you got here, really consider going back to them and saying, look. We'll do the ninety nine five, we're gonna set thirty thousand aside, and if we can get the environmental. Done, and I I don't personally have a problem if you did a pair of pursuit, you said, look, we spent twenty thousand environmental, ten comes out of escrow, ten we'll cover, because. To me, we've seen properties that probably should have been tear down go for two hundred and fifty thousand in town.
Yeah.
I know I'm quite familiar to where I'm at, and uh, so I think the value. I don't think it's a bad price as it is there, but if it's a light saturation and it's infected the entire lot, you've got to excavate two or three hundred yards. Where it's, because it was two years ago plus and it's permeated out. Not that's the case, it depends on the soil saturation, we'll know from the soils report, but if the. If that's the case, then you could be spending as much as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you're gonna take all that cubic yardage out.
Mm-hmm.
And then really what you bought is a hole in the ground and a very expensive hole. Because then you're gonna need to fill in or do something to grade. In fact, you might not have to put a whole two or three hundred yards back in, but. I think if you can mitigate some of that there, that I think, and and you guys decide on something like that tonight. That that's what you're going to propose back, that you can at least get that narrative out there, because I think. With the environmental stuff, I, we just know how Ransley can chit chat on stuff that. It's, I don't think you're gonna have a successful approval of that without some kind of a mitigation of that part. Just my personal opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I would strongly suggest you think about taking some kind of action on that, so that Joe can go back and. Either through via the attorney or direct communication, say, we're still interested, but this, this is a factor. And we need to investigate this in the best interest of.
Okay.
It's my opinion.
Jake, you have anything?
Sir.
Sam. Jim.
Good.
All right, um, I guess we'll bring this public hearing to a close. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, that was very good dialogue. Thank you for the presentation, Joe and Mr. Dixon.
Listen, what happened?
At five thirty-nine, Joe.
Alrighty. Uh, if there's a conflict of interest, please disclose it when it comes about. Any adjustments to the agenda, Joe?
Uh, I'm not aware, Mr. Chair, I I will add. I don't believe Mr. Atkins is on the agenda or in the super commission update, but he is pressing, but I'd like to know that maybe that's why he's.
I ever responded to Tracy.
Dude, you want to let him do it now? Get snubbed. Yeah, are you ready, Mr. Atkins?
Well.
I mean, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. I, I'm here to represent uh sewer commission board. I'm the chair. I'm Jonathan Atkins. People that don't know me, I'm the chairman of the sewer commission. And once a year, the select, board selecting likes bringing me over here to present. I do not have a formal presentation. Uh, the sewer commission is. Well, the honestly is quite slow or as busy as everything is.
That, that, that's good.
That's all right. Not as many permits to approve as I thought.
Lynn. Trying to conduct a meeting. You can speak in the hall if you'd like.
Um, so uh, not many permits to approve. Uh. Normal sewer and drain layer, drain layer permits approved. Um, one large, one large warehouse, um, housing project has approved on our end. I, um, on Cross Street. Those are kind of the highlights. Um, it's a dry year. If you want the stats, Ryan will share them with you. Other than that. Expecting more building permits in town, but there's not, not enough lots.
That's fair. That's fair.
It's always a little like, yeah.
All right.
So are you something? That could change.
It's for me, really, I I, I'm sorry that I'm not like.
Um, I think, well, just a comment, I think to your last, your last comment, just with the idea of vacant lots is. That could change fairly easily with the new language or or uh building. Uh, envelopes that have have significantly shrunk, so you can start seeing split lots in the, in town where people either put a secondary unit in or or sell a piece off, so that could potentially be a. A large influx of permits for you folks to look at.
I guess, I mean, yeah.
Potentially.
Um, other than that, I mean, no, our board's really boring, to keep it that way.
No, it's.
It's the whole board. Everyone kind of shows up too.
Yeah, well, that's, it's a good thing. It was, I remember it was dead years. We struggled to get people on that commission as well as other boards, so that's good to hear.
Other than that.
All right.
I'm all buying that lot.
Good job. Chair.
Price of three SUVs.
All right, moving right along.
Uh, any, I just.
Uh, if you'd like to be. Yeah, did you have anything else, John?
No, I have.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Very much. Is there any? It's, is there any public to speak on a non-agenda item? Uh, seeing done. All right, we have minutes from boards and committees, sewer planning board, park commission, ordinance committee, and one from us from our last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of our October sixth meeting.
Second.
James motion, second by Sam. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Motion passes. I'm working to approve the event permit pending certificate of liability for the uh chamber farmer Stephen.
Giving tree lighting. Motion by James, nothing by Sam. Discussion. All those in favor? Motion passes.
All right.
I'd like to appoint Mark Bogart for the county.
Motion by Sam, second by Keith. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Welcome aboard, Mark. First one. Okay, old business. We have an R F P D for the town office flooring. You know?
Mr. Chair, this is a revision to, or addition, I should say, to the original quote. Uh, it represents a door includes. Removing the carpet in the room and putting the same platform in the rest of the building. So the total is, I think, one, one point five seventy-five. What tell me, excuse me, what tell me to approve for this project was sixty thousand.
Okay.
Safely under that amount.
All right.
Keith happy. Well, I, I'm almost happy. I just working some quick numbers, looking at this, because I was a little surprised than the, maybe I'm. A quick, quick glance, I was a little surprised on the the labor cost, given the design of the room, but. Um. If you break down that eighty-nine fifty for the seven hundred and seventy square feet, it's like eleven sixty-two a square foot. I must say that's a bad price. But when I just trying to, does that tooth, like, to your, in your mind, it's like twenty-one hundred square feet seem legitimate for the rest of the building that has to be done? I'm just trying to think of the square, if the square foot price is the same on from the original quote to the new addition versus, perhaps there's a change in. Boston.
One hundred, you're close to what.
Okay. I just.
I don't have the dimensions.
No, which is fine. I just going through some numbers. I just wanted, it's just, we think about a single room, that number seems a little bit different than the rest of it, and it. I just couldn't in my mind, I want to get your input, it seemed like this was a third of the rest of the building.
Yeah.
Okay, anyway.
What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the R P F for the town office flooring to R L B S for fifty-one thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
With motion, Keith, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Right, immunity resilience self-evaluation.
Here, this is a topic we've looked up three or four months ago. I think the board was interested in reviewing this since that page. Uh, Abg. was very helpful. Captain came up, uh, in person last week, he did before about Tracy guy. Uh, and Chief Kate actually was not a meeting. We went through this, uh, and and she helped us fill in. The answers to the questions, the takeaway, uh, here on the first page towards the bottom. There's some questions that were asked, you know, what's the community doing well, preserving the landscape, with local partners, you know, think of the Heritage Trust, et cetera. Uh, public communications, we have improved the website. We've continued to work on social media presence there. Uh, two areas that could be improved in the short term, so upgrading appliances in municipal buildings, so, uh, for instance. You know, the fridge has been here out of how long and it's not energy efficient. That's an easy way to get an energy efficient item in into the, into the works. A storm degree management plan is a little more involved, but we bumped into this, uh, when we have a FEMA. Uh, disaster when wind blows and stuff blows all over the roads. They're, they're very technical now in the last five or six years. Bridle the grave brush, like they want to know the coordinates where it came from the road. Where it landed at the transfer station and then the end user, like they want to know where the chips got sent, so.
Uh, really?
Yeah, we can get some help, uh, having every one of those put together. So that's a plan that we put in there.
I don't know where the chips.
So it's important for the community long-term, tox size, we know about that, workforce housing, transfer station upgrades. Some of these are from your goals.
So I have such a quick question. Just because curiosity, you can say the same thing I did. So back to the storm cleanup. So when, obviously, I understand the process of a highway guy's picked up debris from Quimby Con Road while brought to the transfer station, put it in the, this pile. What it, but what's the per, why would, why do they want to know where the end product goes? Any, I just curiosity.
And the short answer is to prevent fraud. Uh, and it's not just in Ransley, it's it's a countrywide issue. They want to know. How much was generated uh on the side of the road, how it got to. The site where it was uh transferred, the transfer station, and then they want to know the end. Uh, where where it ends up. They want to look, they want to know that, they also want to know the volume.
But when you're.
So they want to know the quantity.
So like timber theft, is that what you mean by fraud? I don't understand.
Fraud and then somebody, somebody coming up with false quantities.
Okay.
So if we're saying it was, say, ten cubic yards, they want to say, okay, show us, we will see a picture of it. They want to know.
Yeah.
And verify where it came from, where it went, so they can go look on the road and say, okay, yeah. Here we go.
And that's easy enough for everybody to track down the line?
Uh, it hasn't been, it hasn't been here. We've done an okay job with where it originates from. And where it lands, but we've had some issues with it getting pushed into the other material. So if you can verify that you kept it separate, that's one of the steps. Uh, and then the the final step is literally, where does it go? Uh, and is it, is it, here's one of the caveats, is it a D E P licensed facility? Uh, and then the the final step is literally where does it go? Uh, and is it, is it, here's one of the caveats, is it a D E P licensed facility? Right? So if it's going to, somebody's gravel pit to be burned, then it's not D E P licensed, they have a concern with that also.
But if it goes to us, we are.
Yeah, if it goes there and but we're not the end user, if our brush gets chipped, either biometric typically gets.
Right, correct, yeah.
Know all that stuff. We just need some help getting that.
Okay.
Plan, but everybody knows the SOP.
Didn't mean to figure it apart. That one just was.
Yeah, and you can see why some of these goals are elaborate, like it takes a while to get them written out and and put into place.
So I'll be, so just to finish that, so ideally then would be. It's over storm event, it would ideally be be like the highway guys or that those whoever whoever crew brings, whether we hire out or whatever, that crew would bring. Maybe bring that pallet to the backlog instead.
Right.
Then have this happen, those know, be like, when you grind this, if it's one trailer load, we know.
Yeah.
First miss, quick solution.
And then having FEMA. There are brands that help you actually generate these things.
Okay.
That's why it's important to have it on the list and I won't go through. Uh, on the last page, you can see. Those city filings uh for the community, creating washup plan and implement recommended. On dam, uh by the way, the Hailwood Pond Dam Committee is active a couple of times. So they're having really good discussions. Um, but hopefully I can keep up with them. And then an energy audit. Um, we we were uh planning to do this back when we did the heat pumps, but. I really think the town should do. Um, and then we talked about having a sustainability committee to. Or group to build interest in developing education opportunities for uh, this is another one that we. My me, that struggle to get off the ground. Transfer station. So maybe there's some brands that that could help. I know Mark he he is the guru of that. Um, yeah, but either it's over yesterday. Yeah, so. Uh, and we did go through the this sheet here too, and this is just more of what we've done uh, but tonight what I want to do is have you bless this if. If you prove so that uh we can now help us upload this to. The uh governors, the policies, the innovations, the bottom bottom. That basically makes us pre-qualified.
Okay. Mark?
I, Mark Bogart. Uh. Yeah, my question revolves around on page seven of the. Well, larger pages. E one, five, six, and ten. Uh, but E one. A doctor gold conserve at least thirty percent of land in the community by twenty thirty. And it says, uh, you know, Heritage Trust, not the town. And I'm just wondering, does the Heritage Trust actually have a full? Goal of conserving thirty percent of the land?
I don't believe that that's the note. Uh, it is what the note said, but I don't believe that's the intent. Uh, why this note is here, the the note means Heritage Trust would be. The point person for that type of project, if it were to happen. I don't know that they have a goal specifically to do that.
Okay.
The goal, the goal is is kind of boilerplate. These items in the, this column, fourth column from the left come from this document. We didn't, we didn't generate those goals. Those are goals that plug in this. Everybody looks at and see why.
Okay.
So I know I just, in reading those references to the Heritage Trust, I know they're. Pretty involved uh in a large project up at the headwaters of the Galloway River and all of that with. Other big agencies in the state and uh, you know, I just haven't heard much about. Any new focus of. Rangeley Acres, uh, you know, and any uh. You know, inventory, habitat, or anything else, you know, I think there were. Seem to be more like, you know, hold and pack, not rangeley, working on these other larger projects. So just. Made me wonder about it a little bit because. Doesn't seem like people. Meet with the Heritage, other than the Doc Skies, I haven't seen a lot of interaction between this. The town and uh the Heritage. Anyway.
Thank you, Mark.
So we can clarify that, that, and again, this, you are getting the absolute very first draft of this. Tracy and I talked about the other day, so let's just send them what we have, what what Abg uh helps us produce or produce force. And let's let them flush out comments like that and we'll. Tune them up and send them.
Your motion to. To uh take this as a first reading then or?
The real, real quick, uh. Mark, interest my, well, that's the interest my, I repeat my curiosity. So. I don't think it was ever going to happen, but in the event that Heritage Trust just dissolves and it don't ever will. But then those of those questions become now to another avenue potentially of how Sust Reserve, but is is there ever a need or for the town of Rangeley to look at preservation of? Lands that we can, you know, in the Rangeley Aquatic Area? To have a.
You can have a conservation commission of your own.
You know, our own sanctuary. Just.
I I think that would be a task when your non-plan committee gets active, uh, make sure that's. Not already a ticker in there, but uh, you know, maybe have them look at that, see if that is an outcome. That that they might see in the con plan. If it's not, you can look at that, you know, separately.
Chris?
There's several agencies out there that do that. Looks like the Heritage Trust, like all five O one C threes, they have in their. Bylaws that are recorded in order to qualify it as a five O one C three, you have to have three specific articles in there, articles. Seven, eight, nine, that are in an addendum. Because I've set up a few of these that says, in the event that we. Dispose or no longer grid, that we will. Hand over our assets and responsibilities to other like kind. Bylaws. It's required under state law and it's required under federal law for your seed free designation. So whether that becomes uh. Nature Conservancy, as we've read a lot about them with the Kennebec dams or some other type of. Agency, they would, part of their exit strategy would require them to hand, hand off to similar. Entities uh to take that on or exactly the town could. Set up their own and say, okay, we'll take over that responsibility. Though, I guess. I I think that can be covered enough.
Like that, I.
But it's a great question, but you might not be aware of that.
I definitely.
Required. Of anyone who has a five O one C three, they have to put in there that we will be handing off to. Someone of the same call, because otherwise anyone who donated to that, if they didn't, then that would disqualify their donation on their tax return.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Alright.
I know that's.
Yeah, no, thanks for that.
Definitely helps me.
So I make a motion to approve the first reading of the community resilient self evaluation slash CRP community actions.
Second.
James Morgan, second by Keith. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Next, we have uh slackboard goals a while back. Vis- visited this, so soon revisit this to. See where we're at with.
Yeah, just to check in, Mr. Chair, I have an update on the air show. The Air Force Commission uh. Talked about this at their last meeting, the one before, recently they've talked about it. Uh, there is a member of the commission that wants to spearhead a uh subcommittee, so he's working on getting folks. Were interested in that for a twenty twenty six air show. So that's kind of progress there. There are some funds set aside in that meeting. I said I thought there were fourteen thousand. I think it's closer to nineteen now. I'll get you an accurate. Number on that when the time comes. So there is some money, seed money set aside. Um. And you'll have to, the other reason for this uh is a check in, but also uh if you have any, any more uh input for me on items such as assisted living assessment.
Jim.
That would be helpful.
Not assisted living assessment, but on the transfer station. I didn't realize this was an option until we had Archie and Cassell up here last month or whatever, but. Personally, I don't know if the rest of the board has any interest into it. When they said that they have taken over transfer stations in other towns. I just think it's part of our due diligence, maybe to get some information from them, costs, maybe just to see what. They do. If there's any cost savings to the town by them doing that.
I don't think I'll do that. Let's see the number.
Not that I do. Yep.
This is probably the wrong time to ask this question. But it says May Tree sidewalks and it just popped in my mind. Um, obviously the new uh, everything's paved back in. Is there no longer a need for detectable warning plates in those in those areas?
Uh, they're supposed to be.
Everything just paved.
I don't think I saw them anywhere.
Home fill up.
Yeah. I'm just curious if they come back in after the fact or why they, I guess my, part of my thought was why they would cut the pavement back out to put those back in. Or are they gonna, it's a different style, you glue on maybe?
I don't have.
I saw.
I'm just, just curious.
Well, I saw a bunch of them down at the depot lot, the cement pads with the. Yeah.
It's on top. I thought they set them and paved around.
I hadn't noticed, but they.
Straight pavement.
Yeah, one reason that it could be is because we're, it's October twentieth today and plants. The fifteenth is like a historical date for shutting down for, for high grade pavement anyways, what goes in the roadway, um, as I remember. So they might have been trying to get. Pay it done while it was warm enough to to get it put down and then cutting it out and replacing, but I don't want to speak for them.
I just, just curiosity. Can I talk, happen to see here?
Yeah, I don't have, I can follow up information on that. Uh, to answer the question though, detectable warning plates are.
Okay.
Yep, so uh my expectation is that they would be installed. It sounds like a precast, which I have.
That's what I saw, but alright.
Um, I don't know if they, yeah, I haven't inspected that work. It's DOT work, but. My guess would be probably has something to do with payment, but they may have only put in the base layer, base layer payment and maybe you're going to.
God.
Those with the surf.
I didn't look that close.
I don't know.
I, well, yeah, I didn't look that close, but I thought I think it's pretty flush, but.
I think they just kind of wait till July and set them on there and hope they just melt.
Yeah. July.
Any tip down on it has to have them, right?
If it's crossing rope, yes.
When it comes to a crosswalk, yeah. So I mean, yeah, there's quite a few of them that.
Yeah. Yep. Alright. Good question.
Um, they're going to wait till the third of July with that.
That's, that's what I was saying.
They pick every holiday to go through.
Yes.
Sign when they did that testing, did you guys see that today? They stopped every eight feet.
Drilling holes.
Did a little sound testing all the way through.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They started strong.
Um, investments on on your second meeting in November, Mickey Haas will be here. I invite him to come up and talk with you about some. Investments. By the way, funny cheap conversation. He thinks we're doing okay with what we're doing now.
That's good.
As far as the percentage uh that we're getting, but I did invite him to to have a conversation with you in November. Uh EMS needs assessment. You got a really brief update from fire chief last time he was here uh in a meeting. He's requested information from North Star. North Star are going to give what they can. Uh. There's some things that I don't think are going to be packaged up uh the way that the the group is looking for. Uh, if you get to a point where you want to have a formal EMS study, let me know and and we can. Uh, I get you some metrics on that, uh consulting firms that do those type of things. Uh, but when we do, when when chief is prepared uh and ready, we'll have him come back and give you what he's got from his group. Monthly committee updates, sewer sewer chairman was here. It was a perfect example of Tracy is keeping that organized for us. Thank you, Tracy, for that. Um, housing needs for employees. This is another one along with assisted living assessment. If you have any more details for me to help me. Grasp that task, please let me know whether it's tonight or. At future meeting. Transfer station you cover. Closet park phase two design. I I have a little bit of tidbit on this. I think I wrote it in my notes that uh we're looking to get that out to be in January, February, so we have good budget numbers. And Wright Pierce began an internal review of this project today. Uh, it's Patrick, who beats with the uh Fox Rec Commission. He's got some some feedback that there may be some interest in an ice cream uh out there. So the timing was appropriate to. Have that put in there as an option. That is not saying that the town is going to build that as an exploration. So uh for folks on the uh. Our commission, that's a follow up that you may not know yet. I guess reached out to Wright Pierce and and they're going to kind of look at that internally and then I have emphasized everyone, Patrick and others that. That needs to come to the board of selecting before it goes any. Much further than that in terms of budget and so forth. Main Street sidewalks, another item that if we get to be at January-ish, February-ish, we'll have hard numbers for uh for budget. And then needs assessment, we've talked about that tonight.
Okay. Was it, was there a timeframe for that needs assessment?
Um, there is an hard fast one. I know that they are working on it internally over there to get it to you. I don't have a date yet, hopefully in December sometime. Um, I know that's one that you're very interested in.
I would almost think the housing needs for employees kind of ties in with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was a couple in the audience, uh Chris, then Mark.
Um, question I had, you mentioned Mickey Haas coming to that. Are you guys going to do a formal RFP for investments? I mean, you have, and you have designated fund several million dollars. I know when I worked at Merrill Lynch, I actually went to a couple of municipalities that had, I mean. One of them was Miss Cassidy at the time. They kept all that money from me again. And they did, they built a diversified portfolio of dividends. Those type of things and looking at that, because I mean, CDRs are great and I looked at the rate. I mean, you were getting a crazy rate before because I think they made a mistake and you went to your advantage. But uh what you're getting for a rate now that I saw in minutes, it's 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 a fair rate. It's a good rate you're getting. It's decent rate. So um, but if you do go to a formal that then. I would like to be aware of that because I do know a few people still in that industry and uh Mickey's great. Just get a couple ideas. That way you can kind of look at, like you do, it might make sense to take the. View of those millions that you got long term and then figure out and maybe get some. High dividend paying stocks and everything, you know, pay for the next market, adjust and jump in. It might be, might be worth it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Those of us who did on the personal level on April eighth. Worked out pretty well, about thirty percent above than the S and P. Or there's um, you know, even if you did some index stuff and some ETFs or. Uh, those type of things, I think that could give, that could diversify you a little bit and get you some returns without. A lot of risk, but I think it would be worth taking a map out of a risk profile to uh do that, because I think. Fix, fix, certain fix things are okay, but I think. It might be worth trying to balance some of that out to get a little bit more of a yield, because you do have a significant amount of funds in your. Your portfolio that kind of outweighed the. Normal look. So I would suggest you look at putting a serious RFP out. Uh, maybe for the spring, uh, spring of the year or or for the new year, maybe sometime during your tenure. Because I think it. It at least give you some ideas of where you might want to go. There, is it big enough portfolio that I think you would get some interest from? Those several companies that are out there uh that do that. I know we have um. There's a couple important that have a lot of ties to up here in the Rangeley area.
Yeah. Will be uh.
Nick Ledley's sister, the firm she's at.
Do you plan, do you plan to be at the meeting when Mickey comes? It'd be good to have you in the audience.
Yeah, yeah, I just think it would make sense to do a. Formal RP. I mean, doesn't mean you have to do it, but at least you get some.
I've been wanting to explore it for a long time anyways.
You've amassed a pretty good thing. I think the last time I looked, cash position was, we're pushing nine, ten. With total cash, which I know we got to keep lit with, but. It wouldn't hurt to take three or four million and and set it up so you can. Get a little bit more than three percent yield on it, even if it's. Just good dividend paying stocks. I know with a couple nonprofits I work with, uh, they've done that, even if we, even if we went with Main Community Foundation or somebody like that. They've been getting a pretty good yield for some of these uh nonprofits as well. So.
Yeah.
Um. My, I think it's worth it.
Yeah, no, I think it's worth looking to. Mark?
Thank you. Uh. Yeah, so on the housing needs for employees, I just assumed that would cover workforce and affordable housing is, well, that's all in the same. Group uh, is it?
I'm not. I don't know about work, I'm sorry.
I don't know, go ahead, because I don't remember.
I didn't, I don't know about work. You're talking like the development that they're doing over on Cross Street or?
Well, just. Workforce housing is different than.
Well. Right, yeah.
Workforce housing is that, you know. Housing that, you know, like town employee, fire and police, you know, teachers, all of that, the working members of your community with full time job. The houses that are priced that they can afford.
That's what I was thinking more.
Right.
Well, you said, alright, yeah.
That was my understanding of this, but I wanted to clarify before I started this, that that was the board's intent, what they're supposed to give me this.
Thanks, thanks for asking about it, Mark.
And then, I have three, and then uh. Thanks to me on the transfer station, you know, to collect more data and information from other towns and things like that. And then. I had brought up about a year and a half ago, about doing a similar thing with the fire department, because I wasn't. I wanted to have you folks look at our coverage area uh because. We've taken on, the town of Rangeley has taken on more and more of stuff that used to be. The state's responsibility, all these unorganized towns, when they had the forest service, things like that, and uh. I'm almost thinking. They should. It make, to look into it, because it may make sense for them to take those things back over rather than the. Town of Rangeley, build the fire department to cover who knows how many thousands of. Square miles and acres and things like that, you know, that uh. We could have a more consolidated, better quality fire department that was manageable and affordable if we weren't taking care of.
If we weren't taking care of all these outlined areas and why we. How it evolved that we ended up taking all this responsibility from the state. You know, I just think it might be a good thing to revisit and uh see, see what it looks like.
Yeah. Chris?
Um two follow ups to that. I I don't disagree with Mark on that. I think. I think the chief and fire department, they're doing, they're doing a great job with dealing with everything there, but I also think that cost segregation is really important. And there should be some kind of analysis. I mean, cheat, they track all the calls, they're they're doing good with the social media, getting information out, those type of things. Let's figure it out, you know, if we're doing. Twenty seven calls from a Galway and it costs us X amount, he should be able to compute what it really costs us to run a vehicle, two guys. Whatever it takes to go out there to get that stuff, get it figured out, look at the revenue we're taking in and there and then say. Look, we're going to adjust and every year we're going to do an analysis before we give you the next year's bill. This is the formula we're going to use. To do that, and I think it might be interesting how that shakes out. I know everyone's been afraid to do that, because I think. If we look at some of the percentage and some of those pieces, it may not necessarily balance out with the plantations. But I think. To be in true and fairness, we need to figure that out, so kind of have to figure out the mileage and that type of thing, because as you know. Fire trucks, it seems like they get twenty five, thirty thousand miles, they're they're junk. And we've got to swap them out or do some of those stuff, so I think. It's important that the mileage rate is probably not like you and I driving a car and getting the seventy cents a mile rebate back. It's probably in the several dollars. Or about tens of dollars. Um the other thing I would really like, if you're going to look at the housing thing, this came up a lot during the comp plan. And in fact, I think, you know, uh Nance brought it up a couple of times, was. The senior housing piece, you know. I'm personally experiencing it right now. My in-laws are going to be moving. They just put their house on the contract and they're leaving Rangeley to be in Gorham because. More accessibility for healthcare, there there's really there, you know, every time it's appointment, it's a whole day process there, and so. I hate, and and they've been good volunteers in the community and participated and done a lot of things, and uh I hate to see that happen and. To be frank, we're all sitting here now, I can speak for myself, I'm going to be fifty five this this summer. And, you know, ten fifteen years, I don't really want to pack up and leave. And we've talked about it, Sam's brought that up sometimes. We need to do something, and guess what? It's municipal, it's state, it's it's town, it's that, unless let's face it, government and projects like this. They take years, so even if we start now, I'm optimistic by the time I'm sixty or sixty one that maybe we have put together something. And I think the real need isn't necessarily nursing homes. I think it's. Condo living with access to things and then figuring out what we can do. The medical thing is the number one thing. That was a big expansion that we had and all that there is what can we do to help supplement? Or do something with that there, and that's something I'd really like you to consider with this. Large amount of undesigned funds, if there's some stuff that we can do that can help. Make that work. We've we've aged. Some of you I know have read every page of the comp plan, some of you maybe read the highlights. But go back over the section that deals with the aging population. We've, we're ten years older than. The average now. And, you know, these are all good taxpaying retired individuals that can afford. Decent houses, we're seeing, you know, we're seeing houses sell for five, six, seven hundred thousand cash deals, retirees moving up here, that type of thing. We are lacking in this this part, so when we're doing the housing piece there, I really think we need to figure out. On the commercial side, what we can do. I'm not saying we're going to get a convenient MD like they're building in Farmington, but can we do something that can. Fill that gap where somebody feels more comfortable to stay here because. There are some things and it's not an easy thing to solve, and I think we've got to figure out. I think prices hopefully are going to go down on building costs and stuff, but when I would have started building, it's, we were dealing stuff with Saddleback when I was running development there in two thousand eight. It was a hundred and fifty five dollars a square foot to fill a car. You can, if you want to do that same condo now, you're over four hundred a square foot. So we've got to figure out some economies of scales and whether it's, we look at some kind of housing where it's. Senior housing, but yet young family housing, they did some of that where they repurposed some stuff up in Cushing. Uh up on the uh up near uh Eastport and Leveque area, they repurposed some old baby housing, I think it was, or. Of course, I'm not sure, and some of these things that we can figure out some ways to make some of that work. I think we really. You know, best time I started this was twenty years ago, but the second best time is today, and I really think. With the common implementation committee and some of this stuff, I'd really like to see this board say, okay, let's get serious about it. Let's see what we can do. There's a new facility going in in Rufford. I know that they've worked that out. I know the developers there, they're reputable folks there. What can we come up with? It's kind of this hybrid thing where it's like. Fifty five plus community but has some of the services they are needed to. Why do the lodges sell as soon as they go on the market the same day? Is because it's kind of a community where you don't have to. You don't have to mow your lawn, you don't do your thing, you've got your condo, you look out to late, you 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 go do, you go play pickleball, you do your retirement stuff. So I think we've got to figure out if we can kind of combine that where we have, you know, the senior section, but we also have. These younger families are trying to do it, because. When I was just finishing law school, main state housing, you could buy a house, the max was a hundred and ten thousand. With a three percent down, it was a hundred and ten thousand maximum house pressure you could buy. That same program is still going in Cumberland County. Do you know what it is now? Four hundred and sixty five thousand. I don't know about you, I don't think I could afford a four hundred and sixty nine dollar house with it. Normal thing, we're not, we need stuff for our. School teachers, we need stuff for, you know, all our municipal workers, you know, everybody there, so we've got to find this. This piece, and if we can take some of these. We can look at taking some of this uh. And did any fun and maybe look at that as an investment, do that and the right projects that are public. Private, public ease, I think it would really work. I think it's great that doing that other piece here, but those are going to be rentals, and I think that went through so many different. Iterations. But it's going to be somewhere people can build equity. The easiest, the best way for people in America to build equity is to be able to buy their own home. Be in their own home. That's where most of these people that are retiring now, their equity came from selling. Their home that they purchased twenty five, thirty, forty years.
Keith, and then Mark, and then we're going to move on to the next topics we.
So when that uh this list of goals isn't. Listed by priorities.
No, this this was, I I would consider this a a brainstorm, a little bit more than a brainstorm at the moment, just to keep us.
I think you you broke for unanimous that housing was the number one.
Oh, yeah.
Talk about the comp plan. I I misspoke just now. I said it was alphabetical, that's that's incorrect. It is definitely not in any particular order, though that is.
Yeah, okay.
Uh and I do, before we leave this topic, Mr. Chair, I've got an image on the screen that I'd like to output on board. Um our, one of our engineers reached out to that meeting and asked. At the builder supply uh crosswalk, I'm bringing it up now because this is on here, Main Street sidewalks. She has referenced the uh striping on the roads, here it says uh pet markings and then exit uh markings. She's asking if the town has any interest in painting those on the the surface of the highway. Um they're not required under forty miles an hour, but they are allowed. And she just asked, she's trying to button up the documents, she's asking how interested. I'm curious, since I've got you here, are you interested in having those printed on highway prior to crosswalk?
You bring a nice question. Just this one crosswalk, because I'd rather do, I mean, wasn't the idea bookends, like we'd have, can you do one? Coming into town on either side, like so you have pet axings, but it shows, I mean, I hate to see one on Main Street that has the. The paintings and the rest of them don't have any at all.
You want to do one up by the IGA, we can ask to get that into the scope too.
I was just curious.
It it wasn't, I don't know if this was contemplated anywhere.
This isn't in lieu of signage that we're still considering, this would be in addition to. Chris?
Ten days ago, I had a car, I am in the crosswalk across from the bank, walking over to corner park, and I actually smacked the guy's car. Because I was standing next to the guy, the little. I mean, I don't know what we've got to do to knock people over the head.
We're, yeah, we're exploring it. We've thought about, we've talked about signs similar to farming.
He can drive fifty miles there.
Well, let's stay on topic for this one, because that that is an important topic, but Keith.
Yeah, so just three, three things, and I guess somewhat within topic of what was discussed. Um I don't, I don't want any answers, but ice rink obviously will be discussed later. I just want to know about secondary uses for a structure, temporary or permanent, whatever. Sidewalks, go back to you real quick. I missed that part when you discussed it, but is there an update on the bid process for the. Northern part of the Main Street, like the uh shed to uh range the autumn? There's an update on that.
It's all bundled into this product, so there are four or five.
Okay, okay.
They are in the finalization stage here, so she's asking these questions.
Okay. Uh and then my last one is, and it happened to. Uh just popping my head when Chris mentioned it, but obviously the convenient MD and this lot and everything else, I thought this is. Just a far fetched thing, but there's always been a need for uh. Higher medical needs here, I would say, and or pharmacy, so how does? I don't want a big discussion, but how are those buildings, are those privately owned and then, or and then um. Like privately built and then are they staffed through a a company? It's something we can look at here, where like.
Convenient MD as I'm told is it, they build every structure the exact same way, that's why they go up so fast, so it's. It it, I believe it's a fairly large company that has these things.
I'm just curious if that's something we could, you partner up with something at a town like.
I can clarify on that. Right, but what happens, there's an in, is an institutional investor or some private investor who says. Okay, convenient MD agrees to pay me X amount per month, I'll build the building and I get a return on it. We call it, I call it mailbox real estate, you just get a check every month.
So you're like.
They, it's a triple net lease, they pay for the taxes, insurance on the property.
So it's like an uninvolved franchisee.
Yeah, basically you paid for the development costs and they pay you a rent fee. I mean, if we wanted to be creative here, what would be is if we looked at doing our own structure and then offered it. Very fractional rent in order to get somebody to come up here and say. You know, we'll do rent free for three or four years in order to get your pharmacy.
That was one of the uh thoughts that came up when we were talking, we being on our consultant and some of the folks internally. About a community center, if the town ever built a community center, you could have space available for things like that within the building.
Kind of an Matt Johnson's idea.
Yeah.
It might have been Matt Johnson.
Yeah, yeah, he was.
So that's just something to put a pin in, but uh is there any interest in this before I get back to work?
I, yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Okay, and I'll ask her if we can book in.
Okay, I mean, it makes more sense.
Everybody else agree with that, Sam?
You're perfect, thank you.
Alright.
Okay.
Moving on, I believe. Um new business, the ISO public protecting class.
There is actually a follow up, it's new business stadium, of course, there's a follow up to. Based on. You're logging in to get this.
True.
Mark? On on the Zion post stuff, yeah, he made a presentation, he stated that the uh. Average homeowner over two, one percent reduction in the uh. Homeowner's insurance and that commercial would see even more, and I was just wondering if you could. Go, if you could request some. Documentation or find out where it gets that information there to.
Yep. I just requested. I just requested lettuce from Mike Bacon so I could submit to my insurance company, so when I do get that information personally, I'll let you know, but.
Yeah, I'm interested in that, I'll check it and uh. I'd be interested to know if there's any insurance companies that are willing to lower people's. Insurance premium in the twenty percent neighborhood based on this change in Rangers I asked over.
Soon as I find out, I'm going to bring it.
So what would be down to for an asset?
It's had four, 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 one, four, one.
It would tell you it does correlate to your. I just don't know.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Alright. Yeah, that's all good news. Uh next, proposed twenty twenty six state evaluation.
Uh again, this is really good, the update for the board, we have crossed one billion per hour. Need uh that both, one point oh three billion, second only to Carabas, it would. What period of time here, so there are number two with rank accounting. No action is required here, update, and I have spoken with Roger, who's now the assessor here. Does not see any reason why I agree with protest. You have the opportunity to. I agree with him, I don't see that there's any objection. That's for your information.
Alright. Got a couple of RFPs for heating fuels.
Go ahead. Joe, when will that new valuation as well, so that are we going to be in time for that?
This is twenty six. So the review is due by November fifteenth. I think your rebal will be done in time for home state. That'll be.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, that was the great, I heard from a lot of the electorate was. You know, they all went from twenty five thousand in nineteen, so if you lived in town, your taxes actually. Because of that six thousand, whatever, it was a mind map, but still, you know, there's a lot of.
Yeah, uh I think to answer the questions, Chair, I believe the rebound will be the function that that gets folks back up to hundred percent.
Right, that's what we're waiting for. Thank you.
Motion to accept the fuel bid from Dead River in the amount of uh two sixty three nine for uh number two heating fuels. There are three twenty seven for kerosene and one sixty one for propane. Oh, should I give him second by Keith? Discussion?
Joe? I do have a little bit of discussion, um I, my experience with Dead River, I I've worked with them on this a couple of times. They do daily computations. And I've held them to that a couple of times, um they sometimes want to say that. Uh we went up a couple of cents here or there, um I I intend to be firm with them. Uh I don't know, they may push back. I talked to the salesman the other day, he called. And I explained that to him and he said, oh, you're going to have to be firm, so my plan, just so you know, is to hold them to these. Are you okay with it?
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, they're substantially lower than SK fuel at three twenty one per gallon versus sixty four gallon. Um but yeah, be be firm, Keith.
Uh two things, so I do remember this, um and I will, I mean, part of, part of what I do, I would remember with Dead River. Is that once we surpassed the estimated gallons, there was definitely a fee difference. That's one of their arguments, so part of what you just stated. I guess in the. One, can we have, can we have something written and leverage before, like before this is actually voted on or whatever, can we? Can we leverage something somehow that says by accepting this or by whatever mechanism it is, but. This is, we we expect that these are the prices given, no variables based on market and all that stuff.
I don't understand how you can bid a price and then reneg on it.
Hey, yeah, it's it's.
I guess.
They do a daily computation, what the way I remember, we do have, we do enter contract, what I remember about that is. Prior to good up to a certain amount and they expect us to buy that amount.
Right.
There have been where we've, have we uh estimated more than we ended up buying and they they. Treated us kindly there. I think the contract covers that, I don't, I don't think that. Uh if it's beyond that, it's higher, but I again, I don't have that, I will look at that, so if it's higher than. This price above the estimated amount. Does the board want to see it back, I guess is my question.
I can rescind my motion if you want to wait till the next meeting to. Yeah, I mean, we're not dying on this one right now.
Can we do that?
Well, I I can't enter an agreement.
Well, I mean, but.
But we're not under the gun, we can wait to next, till the next meeting to.
I think we had until either tomorrow.
Okay. Bruce, real quick.
Yeah, um just to make sure it's clear, because on the new business agenda here, it says two hundred and sixty four per gallon. I just want to make sure that that's obviously a technical. So.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just to update, and then. My experience with Dead River two is that when they locked in, we do this as a school board, you could have a motion that says not to exceed. Two sixty six or whatever, so that that way Joe can go back and. Get this done, because. I think oil is going to stay the same for a while here, but because it's East of Middle East, but you. I think oil is going to stay the same for a while here, but because it's decently, but you never know what could happen. It is an election year next year. So in the spring, it generally usually dips a little bit every time this congressional and presidential election shoots. So hopefully you ride out better in the spring, but that's a really good price.
Yeah, because you have some.
So I I like, I like Chris's idea. So if you recite, you know, maybe not rescind your motion, but maybe we just put a cap per
You can amend it.
Per amended, so coming back to per gallon. But my other thing was, if there isn't language in the R F P, like maybe next year, we just put a fixed language in it, looking for a fixed rate for X, you know, year X X for the winter. I mean, it just helps clarify everything.
I'll amend my motion to not exceed twenty twenty cents above the quoted prices here.
Thanks. Got amended motion amended second. All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, we have one more R F P uh for the sewer generator. Uh we have two R F Ps for the sewer generator.
We've got a, just a couple of questions.
Fire away.
Uh you want to go, Keith? Doesn't matter.
So my question comment is, just because I've uh been in, not involved, a little bit of question for this through through the department. And then I have a feeling on this understanding is based on the difference in bids. Uh I know it's only, at the end of the day, it's two thousand dollars, give or take. Uh but I feel like there is, I'm probably going to use the wrong words here, but I think there's probably some animosity or feelings of jaded um on Range the Electric based on how this developed. And then I think probably the R F P bidding being written off an original uh quote given. So I think this price is going to reflect that based on how the process went after an original estimate was handed. So I just want to disclose that, I guess.
All right.
There you go.
That's all you got.
First question. If you go with Lake's Region Power, I notice that their electrician's out of the Loston area. Once this is all installed and whatnot, are we under contract with them? If we have an issue, electrical issue, do we need to use their electrician, his electrician, or we're we're open to?
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if we needed somebody, if we had to wait two hours to pull somebody out of Loston or what.
I do know George can generally, uh if he can't do it himself, like he'll be there.
You can troubleshoot most of them.
Usually trouble people, if he can, he's on the phone with somebody anyway, so.
All right, yeah, that's, that was, that was one thing I saw there. And then looking at the uh alternates here, um I was going to suggest taking the alternates out of that and just bidding on the 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 base of it. Obviously, I think the George's alternate bid's a little high and think the amount's going to come in under five thousand dollars, which Joe could put out. Could get quotes on that generator for the transfer station and take care of that himself. And we'd we'd just be bidding on the, on on the base package of the rest of the generators.
The only thing I would need in that place, Mr. Chair, would be authorization to use money from the uh transfer station reserve. We can survive for a while without having that uh connection. Generator is there still.
So piggyback off Jimmy, I guess with that same idea, does it make sense to put if you, does it make sense to keep it in there? If the ultimate plan is to move generator anyway, because therefore the switch would change, like the secondary switch would change location, right? Other, the hookup might change if we ever took the generator out of that building. Would that relocate that mechanism? Potentially.
Possibly. The way this this uh quest is written, there would be a uh a plug-in device ground level inside the operator's room.
Would just go in, okay.
Yeah, it could be suitable to set up, really any generator. This one's old, more than the back. It could probably be connected to standby generator uh that was dedicated down the road. But I think, you know, to go a little further with that thought, if there's going to be an overhaul of the facility for, I don't know how much that difference that makes, you know, for thinking about how it can stand by. We don't, wouldn't want to put it right there. We'd want to put it somewhere else. So it it wouldn't affect wouldn't affect the current generator at all, right? So that's going to come out. And then the the plug would come to ground level. Yeah.
For nine grand, that was that, like you said, does we change location based on these facility changes?
I think Jim's got good ideas.
I agree with your idea. I was just.
So, yep. So I'd make a motion to go with Lakes Region Power Systems for the base bid of forty thousand five hundred and remove the ultimate bid.
Second. Motion by Jim, second by Ethan. Sam?
Um, so are, I see that some of the uh insurances aren't up to we need to put that in our motion, making sure that the liability insurance for both the electrician and person the business overseeing this operation, it wasn't the electrician and certified either as an electrician. Those are.
I'd like to amend my motion. Pending certificates of renewed insurance for both uh Lakes Region Power Systems and the stellar electrical services, as well as the uh renewal of Jason Grover's electrical um license.
Second. Anything further? All those in favor? Motion passed. Okay. Comp Plan Implementation Committee bylaws is to be the first reading.
I had one thing I saw under the appointment section. I was wondering if we should bump that to a seven-person group and include more citizens, um just to get more of a feel from the community itself. I mean, we have members from the town uh workforce, I think, covered, but I think more influence on the taxpayers makes sense to me. I don't know.
I have no wish with that.
Agreed.
You said two citizens?
Uh we'll bring it to, it would bring it to three, yeah.
Okay. Chris?
Um, my only, I'm all for that, adding the extra citizens, but I'd like you to leave the quorum at three members. Because.
Decent idea.
Because I tell you what, we had trouble getting people to show up. We had a couple other citizens that weren't also involved in a lot of town. And I was constantly chasing the quorum. So and and I'll, yeah. So if you would, if you would consider that as a remem amendment, go to seven, but quorum constitutes three or more. So we can keep stuff moving.
Same quorum amount as.
We're really under the guns here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything.
Not that I'm going to get a point. I'm just saying.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's a good idea. Mark?
Uh I thought it might be helpful. I I agree with Jim. I think seven's a better number than five. And I think you should try to strive to have one of those members be from the board that was just dissolved, the comprehensive plan committee, because they would bring some consistency as far as what the intent was. That, you know, it might be helpful to the rest of the members on the committee if if one was immersed.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't think we could stipulate it because they'd have to be interested. But you know, I was hoping the guy in the Ross Cullen shirt in the audience was gonna fill out a paper, but.
I hadn't get to it yet. We, I I had been discussing with another board member about it. I planned to.
No, I I agree with you, Mark. It would, that would be good.
Anything else?
No, I like those two.
I personally, um after you guys done your comments, I had a couple of this. One, I don't like that especially being called within twenty four hours public notice. I really think it should be the standard five days. Because I don't think there's anything on this that's an emergency. I would like to, if you guys are okay with that, whoever sets up the committee that maybe we say this is the meeting date and in the winter, if it's a snow date, then it's the next day or do something, have an alternative date put into the mess with some forethought. I think there's a lot of people to be interested in this, and I just I just think that twenty four hours notice, we get a lot of grief already with the public and transparency stuff. It's been a hot topic for the past year, that I think twenty four hours notice, someone's going to say, I didn't have a chance.
Yeah, I I have no wish with that. The this was generated, uh this was generated by um who generated the this set of bylaws?
Uh like, we made it internally a few years ago, the framework.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's not like, yeah. No, I would agree with that. Did you have, you said you had two things, Chris?
Yeah, and then I would like to see that I would like to see that we get um maybe some more some more, kind of put a little bit of pressure on this committee that within twelve months, we have we we've got to figure out this, the the biggest thing I'm concerned about and I bitched about this years ago when we passed the comp plan in two thousand twelve that we didn't get the ordinances done within the eighteen-month period, the adjustments. And that created a situation where the comp plan said one thing, the ordinance said another. We got into a lawsuit and we all know how that was expensive time and effort. So I think it needs to be in there that the intent should be is to get the ordinances within compliance within, within eighteen months. That should be a a clear goal, I think in in this implementation, some kind of a charge on that. I'm not sure how you map that out, but there needs to be, whether it says clear written goals within the first sixty days or something, but this is eighteen months is going to go like that.
Should that be, should that be designed by the chair of that board so that each board signs it? As you join, each committee member signs it as you move forward, or is that something that you need, would, someone would have to have a a backing language, whether it's in the bylaws or?
Well, I mean, I'm also thinking the duties and powers is that advise the board of actions, strategy, create ordinance policy and the intent of implementing the comprehensive plan within the next eighteen months. Adding that phrase there. It kind of puts it it, it puts this into a pressure cooker a bit, but this needs to be in a pressure cooker, because we need to get this done. This is kind of a weird period we're going into where we have an old, we have old ordinances against new there. And hopefully, I don't know what you have in the budget for that. I didn't double check that line. But we're going to need some horsepower out of Freddie Flaherty or somebody to be helping this ordinance review committee get this stuff cracked out, because it's, it's going to be a dead rough.
Mark?
I I think you get your committee together. I think they present to you both a list of which, what their priorities are, that's to match up with what your priorities are for the town, you know, housing and this and take those issues and some of those are going to take a lot of effort, you know, so I don't think you're going to produce all the ordinances that the comprehensive plan requires in eighteen months or two years. But you should be able to on your first three or four priorities, you know, get right to work on the most important thing and try to have those ordinances in the works, you know, within that, that first two years there. Tackle the biggest things first and get those squared around. I don't think you can do the whole plan in eighteen months.
I would just and I respectfully slightly disagree with you, Mark. I think it, it doesn't hurt to put in there and say with, if you put in there in that advice section, intent of implementing the comprehensive plan with a goal of the next eighteen months or something like that, because I think it really needs to be look at you ultimately, the way we wrote the comp plan was, the power sits back with you both. Where to design the stuff? Where to work with, where to help get this thing going, but ultimately, nothing happens until you guys swing the gavel and a a approve that. We put a lot, we put the power with the select board.
Do you want to, you and Tracy kick it around and see if you can come up with some something along those lines, then we'll, we'll do the second reading and if if it's something we want to keep keep up with, we'll, we'll put it in there.
Would it work in the, the mission, the mission statement, that, you know, kind of like, we have this idea to kind of to cut, you know, get this done in a certain amount of time, but not putting it in.
I know Chris is looking for some version of teeth so that he has something to lean against, if if things get lax.
Right, you know?
Sam, I'm I'm fine with that. I think something along the lines in that first paragraph that says to incorporate actions in the form of ordinance and policy recommendations as quickly and as efficiently as possible to meet the needs of whatever, something to that. That could be wordsmith, but I I I'm fine with it in the mission. I want it somewhere in there to say that, you know, time is of the essence.
It's sub-urgence.
Because it wasn't last time.
Well, and and we don't want all the work that all you folks did and and that this uh question that was voted on to just cruise along.
We worked, yeah, take that work on hard. It just, something that creates a time is of the essence, because otherwise we're going to be right back where we were in two thousand. Two thousand twenty four.
I agree. Anything else? All right, Joe's got a couple of marks and orders.
Do, Mr. Chair, do you vote on the first reading?
No.
Oh, yeah. Make a motion to approve the first reading with changes. We pass it off to you. You've got them there.
Looking by Jim, second by Sam. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, we have no correspondence that I'm aware of, do we, Joe? Nothing to be read in the record? Town manager report.
Uh timelines here, I've still got it's available, last day is the number first. For the town meeting, we talked about the four remaining November eighteenth. Uh there is a letter Chris sent out of all the members of the three, if members of the C F C and everybody else, we just follow up on Brock Road that I sent out and Grant's just there, going to the grant sheet. Um I give us notes, my notes to you, if you locks are installed up and running.
No interest for you. We'll get phone.
Project Parker talked about computer upgrades is completely imminent. Rebound, a rebound product is underway. Um uh Matt came and got all the sales data. They're, they're working on that. It's expected to roll out in the spring, as I mentioned earlier. Funds for that, we've been to build this, you know, this recent for warrants, we've been built for payment that projects uh which is coming from the general server investments laid out by by my board last year or two. It's the update there.
Any select board communication beyond what we've already communicated? Uh we have no executive session tonight. Motion returned. Second by Sam. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Chris, are you in town tomorrow?
I am not.
Okay, I got a.